Hear me now?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good.
So Brian, we're at four o'clock. I wonder. It looks like you and I only counsel people on there. It's like, are we on the right? Link here, because you know. We usually like to start on, there he is. Lloyd, how you doing, sir?
I'm just having a ball. Four o'clock. Are we ready to go?
I, I think we have a quorum. I, I like to get. Start on time.
Well, let's give it a minute or so for Cena and, and Michael. We've rarely needed more than a minute or two, so.
Lloyd, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Can you see me okay?
Uh.
Not that we want to, but we, we see your mother there. No.
I know it.
That's right, you're asking trouble when you ask us.
Yeah. What was that dance you were doing the other day, Juan?
Um, I was, it was, I was, I was busting African move. I was following the leader, man. She was. It was like a, it was like a gym class I'd take sometime. So I, I was prepared for it somewhat, but not a front page prepared.
Well, I just, I was just thinking back on the press conference a few years ago when Ralph Northam. Uh, somebody was asking him basically prove that you can do the moonwalk. And, and his wife basically said, no, we, we're not doing that on, on national television.
Hey, Michael.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
We already thing from Cena?
No.
Well, let's give it. Give it another minute. Okay, so Mr. Rogers will join us momentarily. For the, uh. The main item on our agenda this, at this point is the report from the jail. I note that both, uh, Mr. Coomer and, uh, Mr. Bell are with us. Did, uh, did Counselor McGill get a tour of the place? Uh. Martin, Martin or Tony?
Hey, Mayor.
Hey. Did, did Counselor McGill get, get your tour too?
She did not. Those are just yourself and Brian.
Okay, so this is, I, it's, it's more important, I think, that she hear the full thing than. Frankly, than those of us who already heard it. So I'll give her another minute or two.
Sure.
Um. Actually, we, we could go ahead and, and get started, I think, with the sort of the preliminaries. Um, there's Counselor McGill. Okay, so March 7th, 2022, Charleston City Council meeting will come to order. Ms. Thomas, will you call the roll?
Counselor McGill.
Yes, I'm finally here. Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Pinkston.
Here.
Mayor Snook.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade. You might have been muted, Vice Mayor Wade.
We're not hearing you.
Here.
There we go.
That's good. Thank you.
Okay, so everybody's here. Is there a motion to approve or to amend the agenda?
I'm going to approve the agenda.
Okay, that motion to approve, has there been, is anybody want a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, motion passes. The meeting will be divided into three sections. First, a work session to hear and discuss. The staff presentation, in this case, from the Alamo Charlottesville Regional Jail. Followed by a closed meeting, then the regular city council business meeting, which will begin at around 6:30. So. Uh, if there is anybody here who is waiting to join the business meeting to talk about any of the things on the public hearing. Agenda and so on, uh, that, that time will be 6:30. Uh, you can, uh. Go away, get some dinner, come back with confidence that we will not begin that before 6:30. Um, reports, Alamo Charlottesville Regional Jail renovation project. Uh, Mr. Coomer, Mr. Bell, and Mr. Roman are the three who are listed here. Who's gonna lead off for us?
Mayor Snook, I will.
Go for it.
Good afternoon. Uh, thank you all for having us today. As, uh, Mayor Snook mentioned, we, the jail is looking to do a. Renovation in the next few years. If we want to take this moment to offer your preliminary discussion. About those plans, I have a slide deck here if we'll go through and. There we go. So I encourage you, you know, if you have any questions, um, at the end of the slide deck, be more than happy to answer the questions you have. And we have Tony Bell here from Mosley Architects. And he too can answer your questions, if I have. So, no objections, I'll start the slide deck. Give you a brief history of the jail, uh, the current facility opened in 1975, uh. Which became the jail for both Alamo County, City of Charlottesville, and eventually Nelson County. Facility's rated capacity increased to 209 after two additions in the 1990s. Nelson County became the third member in 1997. The final expansion was completed at 2,000, bringing capacity to 329. Final expansion being what you see from the interstate, the tall building. The average daily population has been as high as 600 in 2008 and as low as 265 in January of this year. The January 2022 average daily population was the lowest it's been in 20 years. Current authorized staffing level is 161 employees. The renovation and expansion area is approximately 56,000 square feet and will be contained within the current facility's 152,900 square feet. How did we get here? It's important to remember, we didn't just all of a sudden decide, uh, this time last year to expand the jail or renovate portion of it. A few years ago, on September, uh, 2019, I submitted to the board. Uh. Two significant renovation projects, one to replace the heating ventilation AC systems throughout the entire. Facility specifically within the inmate housing areas and a flooring project. The total of these two projects came to 1.25 million. At that time, the board said. If we're gonna start doing projects piecemeal, let's actually look at a full facility condition assessment. And determine what needs to be done and in which order it needs to be done. So the condition assessment was comprised. Once that was brought before the board, the board then hired Mosley Architects to conduct a community-based corrections plan. Community-based corrections plan, uh. Had several public engagements with stakeholders, both the Commonwealth attorneys, building restoration, probation corps, citizens, staff. At that time, those the architect then presented the CBCP results to the board at December 2021 meeting. The board indicated it would seek reimbursement from the state for 25% of all eligible renovation costs. The board then adopted a resolution directed Mosley to submit the community-based correction plan to the Department of Corrections. Community-based correction plan was indeed submitted on December 31st, 2021. Facility condition assessment, the facility requires significant upgrades and replacement to its HVAC, electrical systems, and other major mechanical systems over the next 10 years. In addition to interior fixtures, lighting, and security devices, et cetera. The facility condition assessment does not determine staff, inmate, or public needs, and it's just structural. The community-based corrections plan needs study findings that deals with how many beds we're going to need in the future. There are no indications in historical data that suggest the inmate population will increase substantially in the future. After reviewing various alternative forecast models, no models indicated an increasing inmate population. Therefore, the rating capacity will not be increased with the renovation. The second part of the community-based corrections plan, planning study determines the needs of the facility. Necessary improvements to the physical structure to meet the current board of corrections jail standards include, but are not limited to. Additional toilets and showers to comply with ADA and new building codes, redesigned inmate housing areas, a recent apartment, encourages mental and physical well-being. Dedicated mental health and segregation unit that is conducive to improve inmate's mental health.
Um, I'm sorry. Have a quick question. Um, in 2008, when we're at the highest number, I think you said 600 and some, was that, um. Were, were we over capacity then? Were you, were inmates sleeping on the, you know, floor or, or, and air is not. You know, designated or planned for, um, inmates.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Yes, sir. Our rating capacity is 329. Uh, we also plan to replace major mechanical systems serving the original facility to improve climate control and air quality. Additional inmate classrooms and programming space, additional administrative space, a larger public visitation area that will meet the needs of public and professional visitors. And additional security measures for staff and inmates. Renovation and expansion meets identified goals and objectives. Rate is based conducive to immediate rehabilitation that reduces recidivism. Use trauma-informed design, sound bedding materials, stress-reducing colors, natural sunlight throughout the renovation and expansion. Add classrooms and programming space, integrate technology into the classrooms and housing areas. Heating, ventilation, air conditioning, replace existing HVAC students, excuse me, HVAC units with an effective. And efficient units installed in air filtration system against. Effective against virus and bacteria, increase fresh air ventilation. Conservation of resources, use energy efficient. Efficient water conserving toilets, showers, and. And faucets, use natural daylight. And renovation improves quality and experience for all consumers. For inmates, pre-square footage per inmate housing areas, apply trauma-informed design in housing areas. Renovate inmate housing areas to create more privacy and security. Create an additional outdoor recreation area, improve quality of social interaction with family, technology-based, and in-person visitation. For stakeholders and the community, new customer service area for family, professional visitors to improve service quality. Professional visitation area with integrated technology for employees, incorporate improved safety and security measures. Provide efficient workflow, apply trauma-informed design to staff work areas as well. Create a work environment for staff morale, mental, and physical well-being. At this point, I'm gonna turn over to, uh, Tony. To discuss the key decision points in the construction process.
Good afternoon, Mayor and members of, uh, city council. So I'm Tony Bell with Mosley Architects. With me this evening is Chris Roman. Uh, he's the gentleman who's behind the Tony Bell label there on the other screen. So what we have here is, is a slide basically summarizing where we've been and where we're going with regard to the approval process. Of the community-based corrections plan needs assessment and planning study. So as the superintendent mentioned, the needs assessment and planning study was submitted to the Department of Corrections. At the end of 2021, and they are currently reviewing these documents. For. Um, and later, within the March and April timeframe. The jail authority will submit a resolution seeking the 25%, that is, one of the requirements. Of the community-based corrections plan and the Board of Local and Regional Jails, before they will issue approval. They must have a, a resolution basically asking for said reimbursement. And during that same March and April timeframe, we will be presenting to all the member jurisdictions. That's obviously Alamo County, the City of Charlottesville, and Nelson County. We had our meeting with Alamo County. Last week, and obviously we'll present it to you this evening. We have an upcoming, coming meeting with Nelson County. Um, once the Board of Local and Regional Jails receives that resolution. They will in turn improve the CBCP needs assessment. And as the superintendent stated, there is no anticipated increase. Uh, and no, uh, anticipated need to increase the rated capacity of the regional jail at this time. Um, an application will then be made to the Treasury Board for the bonds for reimbursement. And the Board of Local and Regional Jails will, uh. Grant their approval of the planning study sometime in that, in that June to August window later this year. On a parallel track, the authority will also be seeking those resolutions from the member jurisdictions. Now, these, uh, resolutions will be to move the project forward. Uh, once the approvals from the different member jurisdictions, uh, have been received. And the approval of the Board of Local and Regional Jails have been received. And the General Assembly has branded its approval and funded the project in its budget. And you see those timelines in the September, December, 2022, and then. Receiving the legislative approval in the June 2023 window. So once we have all of those different approvals in place, we'll then move to the next slide. And this is basically the summary, a, a very brief summary of the design and construction process. So once you have all those legislative approvals in place. The board authority can then advertise RFP. To select an architect and engineer and move the project forward as far as, um, an award of a design contract. As part of the design process, the Department of Corrections requires a value engineering. Uh, step be done. So during the course of the development of the design. The authority, the AE selected firm, and the Department of Corrections will sit down and examine. The documents that have been prepared for the construction, uh, procedures. Um, at the end of the completion of the construction document process. Uh, we'll seek the authority's approval on the design documents and then advertise those documents. For construction of bids. I said, we, I meant the AE firm that has been selected. That decision has not been made yet. Once the, uh, bids have been received, the authority will then negotiate a contract with that selected low bidder. We estimate at this time that the construction period will last approximately 14 months. Obviously, that's gonna be contingent upon the phase, the construction phasing of the project. And the superintendent can talk a little, little bit more about this moving forward, but. Right now makes a great time for this construction and renovation project because your population is so low. Uh, managing the population is, uh. Councilmember Wade alluded to a little bit earlier, managing that population when the population is above the rated capacity is extremely difficult. But when you have a population that is below the rated capacity, it makes that process a little bit easier. Obviously, it's not. Um, without, without, without obstacle, without this, uh, discussion. But it becomes infinitely easier because you can vacate day rooms, you can renovate those day rooms when you're, when they're vacated. And then you can move the detainees back into those day rooms upon the completion. Of the renovation. And we, you know, all things being equal, we anticipate that that final completion of the construction process. Would occur on or about November of 2025. So moving to the next slide, this slide talks about the anticipated cost. Now, this is the cost. Based on the Department of Corrections modeling. They require a certain breakout of the cost. We've represented that with the demolition and renovation cost being representative of about $21 million. The new construction cost represent about $17.1 million. Other costs that would be survey costs, site work costs. Furniture costs, those represent about $7.1 million for a total project cost of $49 million. Again, this is based on the. Department of Corrections model that they request based in the jail standards that have already been adopted. This also includes escalation. So we anticipate a certain amount of escalation based on the today's dollars versus the midpoint of construction. You know, that's what the contractor would be using as he's submitting his bid on the construction documents. And 20, approximately 25% of all these eligible costs will be reimbursable from the Commonwealth of Virginia. So the total estimated cost to localities would be the difference between that 49 million, the 25% reimbursement. Which represents about $36.7 million. So the next slide we have, and these are a little bit out of order. Out of order because they, they're still in the original, uh, order that we presented them to Alamo County. But this is the share of the debt for Alamo County. Will advance now to the share of the debt for the City of Charlottesville, which is what you're most interested in.
So I'll be happy to talk about this. The. These are the, the costs that you see at the bottom of the budgets there. They're, they're based on your assumptions above. So the project here is scheduled to present by Mosley Architects, the full cost project, as they see 49 million, the state reimburses 25%. Debt services allocated based on locality shared inmate days, that's exactly how we give the, the money for operations. Uh, debt is based on a 20-year bond, and the local share of inmate population remains the same. So those are a lot of assumptions, but just to kind of. Zero you in on some estimated cost here. FY23, that is just your operational budget. So you see there's no debt service at that time. FY24, we start incurring some debt with some, uh, some work being done at that point, not a lot. Um, but that is your share of what that would cost. FY25. We start seeing some more costs associated with the pre-construction phase. Again, that 5,329 includes both the operation, the share of that debt. Then FY26 through FY28, you start to see more debt. FY27. Is when you take on the full debt service. That's when construction is complete, the bond has been issued, and we are now servicing the debt. Uh, Charlottesville portion of that, that debt service will be about 1.2 million a year. Uh, for total operations of 5.3 plus the 1.2 would give you about 6.5 billion total. Um, and it's important to note that the cost of 36 million. Cost will be split among the three jurisdictions. So it's important to remember that, that each jurisdiction, but Alamo County, City of Charlottesville, Nelson County, will pay their share of the debt. In this scenario, based on allocation of the inmate days, percentage of the popularity they have inside of the jail.
Can I, can I stop you here a second and ask, comparing the, the, the prior slide 11 for Alamo County. To this one, I note that Alamo's operational expenses are essentially level roughly 4.3 to 4.5 million. Whereas Charlottesville's rise from 3.9 to 5.3 million. Uh, it, what's, what's driving that?
If, if we go back to the overall slide, let me look at that again. Mayor Snook, that has got to be, my apologies, that's got to be a typo. And I apologize for that to the council.
So are they, are their numbers right or are our numbers right?
Their numbers are correct. Your numbers are wrong. That's a good point. So your numbers are wrong. So if we can go back to the Charlottesville slide. The 3,444,853, those will be incorrect. There's only a 1% escalation. In the operational that's used for this scenario, so as you can see, that's incorrect.
So it looks like it was getting a 10% increase every year after the first year. The difference between 24 and 25. Is about 10%, same for 26 and 27, 28.
They, they use a, a 1% so that the math there is wrong. Somehow a 10% plus I got added. So there should be a 1% increase from FY23 to FY28, the operational each year. But the debt service below is correct.
Okay, so the FY28, if we extrapolate that out at 1% a year, we're probably talking about 4.2 million, something like that.
That was correct.
Okay.
So my apologies for that.
Okay, thank you.
The first person to catch that.
Yeah, I mean.
Question for you, Sir, the, go ahead.
Um, thank you, I'm sorry. Um, yeah, I mean, so in, so instead of 6.5, we're talking roughly 4.3, is that what we're saying?
Operational FY28 would be approximately, based on 1% escalation, FY23 would be approximately 4.2 million in FY28 operational. With your debt service at 1.2, so you'd be looking at like a, a 5.4.
Okay, thank you.
You might check the numbers for Nelson also, because in FY25, it jumps rather suddenly in a way that is not simply 1%.
We'll make those change. I'll set out a corrected slide to the council.
Thanks.
And I guess the, the bonds, the, the debt service here, will it basically remain at 1.2 million for the next 17 years then, past FY26?
Not necessarily. For this example, we assumed. That the shares of each locality of inmate days will remain the same. Just an idea of what the cost would be, but they're most likely to fluctuate by how much we, we obviously, we don't know. So know that it will most likely change, but it could get less or it could be more.
Right.
And these bonds have nothing to do with the city's bonding capacity, is that right?
That is correct. The, the debt would be issued in the authority's name, the Alamo Charlottesville jail authority.
What interest rate are you figuring on?
I am not sure what they, Davenport is our financial advisor for this, Mayor Snook, and I'm not sure what they use as percentage at this point.
Just curious, doesn't change the decision, I'm just curious. Thank you.
Martin, I have a quick question. If our bed days go down, because we've been, Charlottesville's been really trying to take advantage of HEI. Um, does that shift how much we will be? Or are these, are these base rates that we're gonna have to pay no matter what?
That's a good question. Like, in this scenario, it's assuming that this. Like, in this scenario, it's assuming that this, these jurisdictions will pay based on a share of their inmate days, so if your inmate days go down. Your debt service will go down and so will your operational budget. If your, if shared inmate days go up, the share of your debt and share of operation will go up, same thing with Alamo County and Nelson County.
Now, for purpose of bed day. That we pay as a locality. What do we pay? The full rate if somebody is on H E I?
Yes, individuals on home electronic incarceration, their base are calculated in each jurisdiction's bed days.
I was about to ask what that was.
So if I can give an example, let's, let's assume that today Charlesville, or last year, Charlesville had zero people. On home electronic incarceration and you had fifty thousand inmate days. Next year, you have one hundred people out on home electronic incarceration. You still have, no other changes in population, you still have fifty thousand inmate days. So it doesn't matter how many people you have out on home electronic incarceration, they're accounted equally across the board.
So the amount that we pay doesn't change depending on whether they're on H E I or whether they're resident.
It doesn't change your inmate days, it's a good question, it doesn't change your, your calculation inmate days, correct. However, the more people who are out on home electronic incarceration does indeed lower the overall operating cost of the jail. And therefore you pay less in that regard, but.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Is there more?
This is it.
Okay.
I had an additional question, um. What is considered to be trauma informed design?
I will let Tony answer that question.
That is an excellent question. Uh, we have a whole presentation on what trauma informed design is, I won't. Levy that all on you this evening, but trauma informed design is, it's not a concrete. Um, definition that, that you can, um, wrap your hands around. Obviously, a lot of it has to do with how the facility is operationally run. Um, as the superintendent mentioned earlier in the presentation, there were a few things listed, you know. The, the different colors, the different materials. Um, the use of natural daylight versus no natural daylight in facility. Uh, for those of you who have toured the existing facility, you will have seen a lot of bar grade. Um, that was in the nineteen seventy five portion of the facility. You know, that, that's original to the facility, that is fifty years old. There are no bar grades installed in modern day jail or prison construction. Um, so bar grade definitely is not trauma informed design, bar grade with it has very, um. Reactionary, you know, it, it generates, um. Definite meanings for the individuals who are within the facility. And you know, make, make, make no mistake, if you're in a, a room that has bar grade in it, you're in a correctional facility. Um, you're in a jail. Um, or detention facility, so it is construction such as that. Um, some of the measures that will be taken to induce a more trauma informed design facility. Is removal of all of the bar grade. It is opening up windows, now when I say opening up windows, I don't mean compromising in any of the security. Of the facility, but right now the windows. That open onto the majority of the day rooms are approximately ten feet physical distance, horizontal distance. From the actual detainees, i.e. if I'm a detainee, I can't walk up next to the window which serves the day room. A removal of that bar grade, it would allow me to go up next to and receive some direct sunlight from those windows. That's trauma informed design, it's, it's giving the detainees access to the daylight. One of the aspects of the improvements to the facility that's planned is an additional exterior rec yard, recreation yard. Such that if, if I'm a detainee, I can walk out into that rec yard and look up and see the sky. Um, many of the areas within the existing jail do not provide that opportunity. So again, we're not going to compromise the security, there will not be an opportunity to throw things in or throw things out of the existing jail. Um, but I will be able to look, look out and see the sky to get fresh air. Um, and to, you know, interact with the exterior environment, again, that is trauma informed design. Um, you obviously, you are familiar with the effect that paint color has on. Occupants of the space. You know, the, the reds and, and the, uh, other, what we refer to as hot colors. Um, have a, a, an effect on occupants of the space to increase. Um, the tension within the space will be using more cooler colors. Um, the blues and the greens and the, and the grays, use of these colors. Decreases the intensity of the room. And, and makes it a more accommodate, a cooler space, not temperature wise, I'm talking about, I'm talking about tension wise within the space. So all of these factors will, will greatly impact the way the, the facility is run and. I'll mention one of the, um. Operational aspects. None of the existing. Jail was constructed in a manner to run it as what's referred to as direct supervision. Um, there were no opportunities for direct supervision in the existing Alamo Charlotte Regional Jail. Correct, when I say that, correct.
With the exception of the expansion.
Of the expansion. So the, the nineteen seventy five portion. Has no direct supervision day rooms. And does everyone understand the difference between direct supervision and indirect supervision?
No.
That's no, okay, so brief, brief description. Uh, and this resonates ver, uh, in a great manner with the Department of Corrections and the Board of Local Regional Jail. So direct, indirect supervision is the method of, uh, running a facility, a detention or correctional facility. In which the jail staff are outside of the primary living environment of the detainees. That is, there is a wall, whether it be glass filled, bar grade or solid wall between the detainees and the jail staff. So there is no direct contact between the jail staff and the detainees. That is not the preferred model. And based in trauma informed design, not the ideal supervision model. Or running a jail facility. The direct supervision model puts the jail staff directly in the space which the detainees are in. And it's, it's a workstation environment in which I, as, as jail staff person can interact. With the detainees and I can have a better pulse of what's occurring within that day room, within that classroom. As such, there is a much better relationship between the jail staff and the detainees. And a much higher level of awareness of what's going on in the jail environment. As such, there is a decreased amount of conflict between staff and detainee. And a decrease, decreased level of incidents between detainee and detainee and detainee and staff. Because issues are worked out before they come, elevated issues. Um, if inmate B has a, uh, the, uh, conflict with inmate A. It's more readily identifiable in the direct supervision model. So. The new day rooms which will be constructed as part of this jail renovation. Will all be direct supervision models. Such that there'll be a staff member within those day rooms to interact with the detainees and head issues off. That'll be in the three new day rooms which will be constructed. There'll also be two day rooms which will be special purpose housing. What is special purpose housing? As the superintendent was mentioning a little bit earlier, that's the mental health, that's the segregation units. And those, that there's not going to be a sign on the door that says mental health unit or segregation unit. They'll be constructed in a very general sense, but they are not part of. Um, the general population. The jail standards require that ten percent. Of your, um. Rated capacity be constructed. As special purpose housing, so when you have three hundred and twenty nine beds of rated capacity. You're required by the current jail standards to have thirty three beds of special purpose housing. Again, these are not counted as general purpose beds. Because the premise is that if I as an inmate have a mental health issue, okay? It's anticipated that mental health, mental health issue can be solved by my being placed in the special purpose housing. I better myself, I receive the treatment I need and then I can move back. To the general purpose, excuse me, the general population housing. That that mental health pod would not be a long term solution for me. Um, that I would go to the mental health pod and then move back into the general purpose housing and that's the D O C model. Um, that's the, that's the reason that we have special purpose beds. So that these, in, these detainees can get the treatment they may, they need. In the special purpose housing and then me move back into general population. So does that, I know that's a long answer to a very short question. Common form design, it has a lot to do with both the physical facility. And has a lot to do with the operational facility and those two work hand in hand with one another. What would happen is that the physical facility becomes an obstacle. For the jail staff to deliver the services to the inmates. And try to decrease presentivism, decrease conflict and assist them in getting back out on the street. Right now, the jail does exist as that obstacle.
Yeah, I just find it ironic that on a night we're going to be talking about education, that many of the improvements you're talking about, such as daylight and things like that. We want to bring to our schools, so, um, it's just how ironic, it's nothing necessarily for you to comment to, but we'll be getting into this later. Um, um, you had mentioned, um. A term that I wasn't familiar with and you repeated a few times that you said that jails are not built now with. What, what, what is that? Uh, I don't know if I understand what you're saying.
If, when you watch, uh, any movies about prisons and older jails and so forth, you'll see the bars.
Oh, oh, yeah.
Bar grade.
I would say, thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that I, I appreciated the tour that I got the other day, it was very informative. If others have not had a chance to go take a tour, it's, it's really worth, uh, seeing. Uh, as I understand what you're proposing, um, A, we're wanting to address real needs with the facility itself. Uh, and also to, to try to, whatever we do renovate, um, in a more humane. More humane fashion for those who are, are, are in the jail. The other thing that was mentioned when I was on the tour was the impact a current facility has on the staff. Uh, I can't remember the, the woman's name who was leading us around, uh, Mr. Plummer, but. She, she just brought up the fact that for a person who's on staff going into these facilities every single day. That being their life's work, um, not only does it impact the inmates. And we should be concerned about them, but we should also be concerned about the staff.
Thank you, I, I couldn't agree more, thank you.
So, um, yeah, I mean, I have taught. Class job readiness courses in there in several occasions and. And this was a few years ago and, and, you know, then even then I could tell they needed upgrades and, and, um, so. Um, I knew at some point it was going to be coming, I didn't know I was going to be in this position, but, um, here we are.
And if I could just ask a question, uh. Perhaps the city manager or someone else knows this, I, has this information, basically what you're doing, what we'll be doing is we'll be taking a, a. An expense of what is for the jail board, a. Uh, a debt expense in, on our side of things with the city, become an operational sort of expense in terms of us. Paying you the cost for operating and then another line item for, for debt service, but in terms of. The city's budget every year, uh, it will only be, um, something that comes out of our operating budget, does that sound right?
That's correct.
Ah, there you are.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's an operating expense, yeah.
Okay.
That means that there are other things that we won't do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there other questions? I guess my, my question, and I'm, I think I'm going to be summarizing things that you've already told us, but it looks like. The major financial commitment. Comes, well, it, it looks like you want, it, it, actually let me back up, the three point nine million dollars that is listed for F Y twenty three. Is that the amount that we are already expecting to be paying or is that the additional amount that's going to go to this project?
There, that's your, I believe. That's your, your anticipated operational. Uh, expense for F Y twenty three, we just finished our budget meeting last week. I believe those are the numbers that you all will be using for your budget.
Right. Regardless of whether we do, whether this project goes forward, we're putting up three point nine million dollars according to this budget.
Correct, for operational, yes, that's your annual operational fee.
Okay, so the amount that we are adding is, is entirely. The, is basically just the debt service number is what we're adding by this project going forward.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. And that would begin a little bit in F Y twenty four, but it would hit hard in F Y twenty five.
That is correct, with F Y twenty seven being the first full fiscal year, full.
Yeah, okay. Now, one of the other questions I had, uh, this. This proposal that you've got, uh, involves the same number of beds, basically. Uh, but massively reworking a lot of spaces, I take it. To make room for classes for, um, I guess. Uh, however you're going to service H E I folks going forward, that kind of activity, is that fair to say?
That's correct, a new visitation area, um, uh, classrooms, the biggest. Pop, perhaps of the biggest single changes is the dedicated mental health. Addition or wing to treat our mentally ill, uh, we currently do not have a condition space for that purpose. The rest of it will be increasing the size of day rooms, square footage per inmates. Um, as you notice in one of the areas where they have a single toilet with a half brick wall, um, for, you know, fourteen people. There'll be additional toilets added or, uh, privacy and so forth, things like that.
Well, and I know, you know, I know we've, we talk about how these days the jails and the prisons are effectively the mental health. Facilities that most of our people, we have more people with mental health needs who are in jails and prisons than we do. People with mental health needs in mental health facilities.
That's correct, the two largest healthcare providers in the country, I believe are Chicago Cook County Jail and L A County Jail.
Yeah, and so for, for this project to move forward. I mean, I, I want to make sure that people understand what we are actually proposing for this. Uh, the, what it means for this project to move forward, that all of the things that. Critics of the penal system would say are the worst aspects of the penal system. This would give us the ability to work, basically to take things away from the purely punitive model. Towards the, more nearly towards a rehabilitation model, towards a community based model. In a way that you do not now have the ability to do.
That's a great summary there, I agree.
And one of the things that I try to tell folks who say, gee, we should be cutting the police budget, we should be cutting the jail budget. We should be cutting the jail budget and so on. If you, it basically don't think that doing it right is cheaper than doing it wrong. It costs money to do it right. It costs money to get the right people hired to be able to keep them on staff. It, it costs money to improve the facilities. Uh, while in the long run, if you want to look at societal costs over twenty years or something, it's cheaper to have done it right. In the short run, for you all running a jail or building a jail, that's not when you economize.
I, I would add to that, that I know there's calls in the community to, to get rid of jails in general. They hope at some point there won't be a need for a jail. Investments like this are the only way that's even remotely feasible. If we invest in the recidivism reduction strategies now and invest in a facility that is conducive to just that, reducing crime, reducing further victimization. We may not need in the future. I hope someday comes, we don't need as many police officers. I hope I work myself out of a job. That will be a success, but this is the type of investment that has to happen. It's not going to happen naturally. Jails just aren't going to disappear. Crimes aren't just going to stop on their own. It takes investment like this, the actual physical infrastructure of this community in order to make the change that the people in the community want, but it has to start here.
And one of the things that we learned as we got your tour a few days ago was that an awful lot of the kind of rehabilitative services people uh, are working in spaces that were designed as closets.
That is correct. Most of our current classrooms were at one point or another either a closet or a completely different purpose.
So, those are my, that really questions or more comments for arguments. Um, do other folks have other, other issues to discuss concerning the jails?
Um, I just wanted to bring up that we had our budget, so our FY twenty budget, we were expect, we had budgeted four million eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand um, for the jails. As you can see, we went down because um, some large bills had been paid off. So basically, we had a couple of years um where we had not as large of a bill because, and so this is almost bringing us back to where we were a couple of years ago. Um, just wanted to bring that forward that as, when, when our, when the jail deck got paid off, we went down for a year or two. Um, but I do recall even in, when we passed the twenty twenty budget being warned that this was probably going to be a short-lived reprieve um from the jail, so.
Mr. Mayor, what are the next steps that have to happen in terms of this actually being, I guess, approved by us? This is the report today, I guess. Um, at some point, this will come before us for an actual vote.
Well, as I'm looking at timeline, um, the resolution from us would be in August or September. Is that right?
Mayor, that's the way we understand it.
Okay.
And the, the plan is, uh, this makes an, and you're answering a question, is for me to come back before this council as many times as this board deems necessary, presents much information as this board deems necessary. So you can make an informed decision. So this today is just a preliminary introduction to this process, to what we're expecting. And to hopefully generate some questions that you can then debate to me and I can come back and make sure I answer all your questions when the time comes. In the fall, as Mayor Smith mentioned, when we act, when I actually do ask for a decision, at that point, you can make a fully informed decision.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And again, I, I really appreciated the tour the other day and I was I was just impressed with your staff. I thought that, you know, particularly in the older parts of the jail, it's, you know, to use a technical term, crummy. And they, you know, they're, they are, I just was impressed with the um, their attitudes, with professionalism and um, you know, I think whatever we can do, to the mayor's point, I think seeing, recasting this from a punitive perspective to one of rehabilitation. And that this is part of our, part of the city's role is to take care of this particular population. Do what we can to help rehabilitate them. Um, to see this as a way, uh, as a, as a positive thing in that respect, I think is important to check, make sure we've got that story. Because it's, I think, the most accurate.
Thanks, sir.
Uh, I think in terms of decision points for us, there will be uh, the resolution from member jurisdictions in August or September. And then the next time that there will actually have to be any significant budgetary issue raised is going to be probably around this time, two years from now. As we're doing the FY twenty-four, twenty-five budget, when all of a sudden we're going from uh, we're adding eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year in, in debt service. But I think the other important point that all of us need to embrace is that and I, correct me if I'm wrong on this, Colonel Coomer, but once we've given the resolution to go ahead and once we have, and once that process has begun to work its way through to approvals for the rest of, of everything else. There isn't really another time for us to come back and say, whoa, we've changed our minds. Fair to say?
That's fair to say, mayor.
So when we make this decision in August or September of this year, we are making a decision that barring something truly extraordinary, we should not be thinking is still a temporary kind of decision. That that's a decision that even though it doesn't have dollars attached to it right then and there, it's going to be a commitment that to, to the jail authority and to our, our neighboring jurisdiction, everybody else uh, to go ahead and follow through.
Mayor, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I would say also to the, to the Department of Corrections, right?
True.
We would be, we, we would be committing, uh, telling that entity that we're committed to do this project.
Yeah. So that the disease that Charlottesville governance has that no decision ever seems to be final and everything gets reconsidered and, and agonized over. Please let us commit ourselves to not doing that once we get past that authorization this summer. So, any other questions that relate to bonds and construction and, and the rest of this stuff? Counselors? Mr. Coomer, one, one unrelated question, but I know we get questions about it during council meetings. What's the current status with COVID over there?
Oh, um, very thank you. I'd be happy to. Uh, our COVID numbers are significantly improved. And if anyone wants to go to our website, acrj.org, the first thing you will see is our current uh data on our COVID numbers and you'll see that they have uh, down to almost zero. I think we have two active cases as we speak, as of today.
Well, another question, um.
Frequency, so, yeah, Brian.
Yeah, uh, Councilor McGill, you're on that board, right? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, and I, I guess this, this recommendation has the, the weight of the board behind it. In other words, the board supports it.
So remember, I've only been on the board for two meetings.
Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Everything I can see is that, yes, it does appear, um, Alamo County is very much behind it. I know Nelson has got some possible qualms. I don't know how that's going to affect things going forward. Um, hopefully, once they see the presentation, that won't be, um. So, most of this work was completed um, before I came onto the board and I got um, an introduction in January.
Got it. Who is our representative?
My main questions were about the bonding capacity and if there, if that affects our bonding capacity, which it doesn't. Um, I am kind of interested in talking about especially if we can encourage as many localities as possible who utilize our jail facility um, to embrace HEI and what that means then. So just, I just want to keep thinking along that line too.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the jail folks? Going once, going twice? Thank you, Mr. Coomer, Mr. Bell, Mr. Roman, um.
Thank you all very much.
And that was the only item on our agenda for four o'clock. And unless counselors have some other thought. Uh, I would suggest we adjourn this part of the meeting and go to our closed session and do so now so that we can get that over with, so that we might have perhaps a longer break before we start back up again at six thirty. Does that sound reasonable?
Or a break.
Or a break at all, yeah. Um, the only issue that I know, uh, let's see, do we have, do we have the link for the uh, closed meeting? I, I think I saw.
I have it pulled up.
Okay, I know it's, I, I saw it someplace, so I'm sure we've got, yeah, there we go. Okay, so let's adjourn here.
Wait, I've got to read us in.
Oh, that's right. Go for it. Thank you.
Pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one two of the Virginia Code, I hereby move that the city council close this open meeting and convene within a closed meeting as authorized by Virginia Code, section two point two dash three seven one one A one, for consideration of prospective candidates for appointment by council to city boards and commissions.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, um, I think this is, this appears to be one, we can just do, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. We will now go into closed session. We will return to a separate link for the six thirty PM open meeting. And so I will see everybody, at least those who need to be in the closed meeting. I'll see you all there. Thank you.
Could someone please send me the link again? I don't seem to have it. At the closed meeting?
For it.
Okay, will do.
Thank you.